Question is agreed by majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. Employment Amendment Bill twenty eighteen. Council now becomes committee of the whole council to consider the Employment Amendment Bill twenty eighteen. Members may refer to the appendix to the script for the debate and voting arrangements for the bill. I will first deal with the clauses with no amendment. And I'll propose the question to you that the following clauses stand part of the bill. Clauses one and two, does any member wish to speak? No, in that case, I now put a question to you that clauses one and two stand part of the bill. Will those in favor please raise their hands? Those against, please raise their hands. I think the question is agreed by majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. I now deal with clause three and the amendments, including the amendments to the long title. I propose the question to you that the following clause stand part of the bill. Clause three. The Secretary for Labour and Welfare will move his amendment to amend clause three. Doctor Honorable Helena Wong, Doctor Honorable Lian Yuzhong, Doctor Honorable Fernando Zheng, Honorable Guerifan and Honorable Hui Jifeng have also respectively proposed amendments to amend clause three and the long title. Members may refer to the appendix to the script for details of the amendments. Members may now proceed to a joint debate on clause three and the amendments, including the amendments to long title. I will first call upon the secretary to speak and move his amendment, and then call upon the members who have proposed amendments to speak, but they may not move amendments at this stage. Upon the conclusion of the debate, committee of the whole council will first vote on the secretary's amendment, and then deal with members amendments according to the arrangements as set out in the script. Secretary for Labour, you may move your amendment. Madam Deputy, I move my amendment to amend clause three as set out in the appendix to the script. I would like to amend section fifteen E two B one of the employment ordinance so as to make textual amendments to align the English version with the Chinese version. The details have been set out in the paper circulated to members. The relevant amendment is purely technical. There won't be any substantive changes to the bill. I urge members to support and pass the amendment. And I propose the question to you that the amendment moved by the Secretary for Labour and Welfare be passed. Doctor Honorable Helena Wong. I speak to urge members to support my amendment, the amendments of Lian Yuzhong, Fernando Zheng, Guerifan and Hui Jifeng from the Democratic Camp. They are altogether ten amendments. For the Employment Amendment Bill twenty eighteen, we would like to move amendments, including the amendments to the long title. We would like to increase the number of paternity leave as well as other textual amendments. For the P L days, the government has said that only the only acceptable change would be increasing it from three days to five days. If there's no support, then the government is going to withdraw the bill. This is a blatant disrespect. It is threatening us and it is a shame on the government. For members amendments. Well, in fact, Mr. Hau Kai Ming of the F T U did ask for an amendment during the scrutiny of the bill's committee. And we have asked the chair of the bill's committee, Mr. Wang Ding Gong, to move it on behalf of the bill's committee. He didn't want to have it increased from three days to five days. He said that we should at least have an annual review that is upon the first anniversary of the bill's enactment. There should be a review. In other words, the F T U doesn't support having five days only. But then they have been threatened by the Secretary for Labour and Welfare. If it is not taken up, then we won't have anything at the end of the date. Alice Mac has also agreed that that's the position. As far as paternity leave is concerned, we are hoping for seven days. Unfortunately, the president didn't permit the C S A proposed by Mr. Hau Kai Ming. And as a result, even if they want to pocket the government's proposal for the time being and wait for an annual review, the hope has been dashed. In fact, they share the views of the D P would like to have seven days. Now, even the C S A to have an annual review has been sort of ruled out of order. Now, I'm moving this amendment. Instead of five days, we'd like to have seven days. So I'm trying to bring a ray of hope. Now, the government is saying that having a review in this time would be waste of money. They have to create more posts to take up the job. So I will appeal to members, including the D A B as well as the F T U members. Please consider seriously the C S A proposed by the D P. Because this answers your wish, the wish of the employees and the many households in Hong Kong. They all want to have a longer duration of P L. Now, among the C S As moved by the five members, we do provide a diversity of choices. It's up to you to choose from the various options. Please support our C S As. Let me first of all address my first amendment. Among the various C S As, I would say that mine is the most modest one. What I want to say is that we should pass the bill as amended, and then we'll have a two-phase sort of program so as to increase the duration of the P L. So it is a gradual approach. It is also pragmatic, and we respect the L A B's consensus. We give face to everybody, and we are able to achieve what we want. This is the most feasible option. So I suggest that let's deal with it in one go in the form of the passage of this bill so that one year down the road, employees will be entitled to five days when they take their paternity leave within the first year. And then on the day following the year's passage of the bill, the number will be increased to seven days. In this way, we can resolve the controversy. We are not allowed to have an annual review, so why don't we make it clear? Less of it for five days for the time being, and in a year's time, we make it seven days. In this way, we can take care of the government's concern. That is, the employers and employees have spent a lot of time to reach a consensus. So we respect your consensus. We pass a bill that gives five days to the new fathers. But of course, we would like to be visionary. We have one bill, but we are able to seek improvements on a gradual basis. We give employers, employees one year's time. We will give enough time for the trade union representatives to convince the employers to agree with us and to prepare for it financially so that the increase to seven days will only take place in a year's time. In this way, we meet the aspirations of the majority of the population, the requests of the employees, et cetera. A moment ago, Alice Mac from the F T U told us about the surveys that they undertook. Well, the majority of the trade unions and the employees would very much like to see a longer duration of P L. They accept five days, but they wish to have seven days. So why don't you take up my proposal, have a gradual implementation to increase it to seven days? So make it five days instantly when we pass the bill. And then in a year's time, on the third day of the first anniversary or the day following the first anniversary, we increase it to seven days. It will be a very pragmatic solution, and it can accommodate our differences. I will urge the pro-establishment camp, in particular the F T U members, to support my C S A. I don't see any difference between my proposal and that from Mr. Hau Kai Ming. So we are of a different gender, but on the question of P L, you have been asking for seven days. I don't think you should make a concession and try to accept five days for the time being. Now, three years ago, had you voted in favor of my Employment Amendment Bill twenty fourteen C S A, you would have got it. At that time, I asked for seven days, but then the F T U and D A B members dodged away from the voting, and that would have saved us this effort to pass the bill today.
Well, let's imagine if we succumb to the pressure coming from the government and if we accept the five-day proposal. In the end, the F T U will have to continue to strive for more days, so as the Democratic Party. So that a few years down the road, we will be discussing the same topic again and again because our request hasn't been met. And you are wasting my time, and you're wasting the government's time as well as the council's time. So we are recycling the same debate topic. And I think instead we should just have a phased implementation of the seven-day arrangement so that we can focus on other issues such as educational reform and housing. And there are so many issues we need to deal with. Food safety, safe drinking water, enacting legislation for that. And I think in the end, we will be coming back to this council to discuss the same issue again. And in fact, I have made my concession. I've given a big discount. We should ask for seven days outright. I also support Mr. Ted Ho and my fellow members move amendment that there should be seven days. If I were to choose, I would pick seven days immediately. But I also understand that some of you, as well as the government, would not agree. So even if you don't support his amendment, I'm giving you an alternative. Support my amendment. I'm not saying that we should have five, seven days outright. We can follow the government's amendment to start with five days. But then we don't want to dawdle any further. We don't want to go back and forth the council. We should legislate as a one-off exercise so that we start with an increase of two days from three to five, and then one year after its commencement, we can have seven days for more time for some means and micro establishments to prepare themselves. This is a very modest proposal. Even if you don't support my move, my amendment, you can go for the seven-day arrangement immediately. I put, I put forward this modest proposal simply because I reckon you wouldn't have the courage to support the daring seven-day proposal. And I think some members are really in a predicament. They do not have free will to vote however they like in this council based on, say, rational analysis, et cetera. Your political courage might have been taken away by your party leader, et cetera. I don't know whether this is the doing of the Communist Party, whether the pro-establishment camp is asking you not to vote on it. But let's do some soul searching, Mr. Hau Kai Ming. I suppose you want to have more P Ls, right? And Mr. Vincent Chang, you are also a father. Won't you agree that seven days of P L is better than five days? It all boils down to whether you have the free will and the determination to stand firm for what you believe in terms of policy decisions. So I'm giving you an alternative. If you do not support Mr. Ted Ho, if you do not support Mr. Lian Yuzhong, Mr. Guerifan, or any other member, at least you should support my reform proposal, which is most modest. I'm not asking for seven days outright. I'm asking for seven days one year after its commencement. I am giving total respect to the L A B and the government. And if you say no to my proposal, it is really understandable that the F T U is always put on a tight spot over labor issues such as paternity leave. You're always in a predicament. You're embarrassed because you don't know whether to support us or support the government. In the end, you need to walk out and abstain from voting, and then you'll be criticized again. If Mr. Li Chuyan were in this council, definitely he would be criticizing you for selling out our laborers. Definitely, Mr. Li Chuyan would say something like that if he were here. I, on the other hand, am not criticizing you in any way. I'm giving you an option. The option you have on the table is one, follow the government, listen to Dr. Lo Chi Kwong, accept the government's proposal of extending the P L from three to five days. But let's bear in mind, Mr. Hau Kai Ming, there is no timetable for reviewing the arrangement. It doesn't say when the next review will come, whether it's five or ten years down the road, and would you really pocket it first? Second option, like the movement, like the amendment moved by Mr. Ted Ho and other members, let's have P L, seven days of P L outright. But I suppose the business sector and the government would say no to that. So the third option is my approach, which is the middle-of-the-road approach so that we can start with five days of P L, and then we can take a progressive approach. One year after its commencement, we can have seven days so that we don't need to come back to the council three, five, seven years later and harp the same tune. We can then focus on other issues. I so submit, Madam Deputy. I urge members to support my first amendment. And if my amendment isn't passed, I so urge members to safeguard labor rights and to facilitate family-friendly policies and make a people-based decision and support the Democratic Party's amendments. I so submit. Mr. Lian Yuzhong.
Madam Deputy, I speak to urge members to support my amendment at the same time to also support the amendments moved by other Democrats. And the amendment is very simple. The majority of these amendments have to do with substituting the increase from three to five days with three to seven days. In fact, this is not that simple. It entails a lot more. We would like to start with seven days and then to further extend it to fourteen days. It's not just about increasing the number of days. It's also about the rate of P L pay. Instead of having four-fifths of the employee's daily wages on average, the employee should be entitled to full pay. We hope that these amendments can be passed. But in order to expedite the matter, we wish to start with the increase of P L days to seven days first. And I really agree with Dr. Helena Wong that we would like to find the middle ground so that we can truly achieve a family-friendly employment policies. In fact, seven days of P L isn't something new. In fact, in twenty fourteen, fifteen, we were already talking about seven days of paternity leave. According to the labor sector, a longer P L duration would allow new fathers to give better support to their newborns and their partners. We've been discussing the same issue for many years. But just as members from the pro-establishment camp put it just now, it is a hard-earned consensus, and the number of days proposed has been reduced. And according to business sector representatives, indeed, it is a hard-earned consensus. Why is it a hard-earned consensus? And the reason is very simple. They work behind closed doors. We have six members representing the labor sector and six employer representatives at the L A B. And of course, it's a hard-earned consensus. There must be a resolution at the L A B before the government accepts a proposal. So we need to have the support of at least one member of the labor sector. I mean, on top of six labor representatives agreement, we need to have the support of one employer over a proposal. Of course, it is difficult. Will the business sector, in particular bosses, agree to giving more leave days to their employees? Of course, the answer is no. Of course, it is a hard-earned consensus. However, Secretary, we have been telling your good self as well as your predecessors that if we are to strive for better employment benefits, it's always a hard-earned process.
You say the same thing every term. Previously, it was Matthew Jones. Now it's you. You say the same thing. I think that has become the norm. If it's the norm, then that is no longer the reason. You keep saying that it is hard-earned. You need to open your door instead of having a discussion behind closed doors. The situation will be completely different. Let's open your ears, listen to the community, then you will know what is actually going on. But you don't have the guts to do that. Now you propose to change it from three days to five days. How many people have you asked? How much consultation have you done? How many consultation sessions and seminars have you done? Have you done any? None. You keep saying that it is hard-earned because you have consulted six representatives of the business sector. I think it has, this point has been mooted so much. That is his cliche. The secretary said that since it is hard-earned, the government has no choice. If the five-day proposal is not accepted and the seven-day is endorsed, then they will withdraw the bill. I think they just want the best of both worlds, and they think that they have power and it's what they say that counts. You want to turn the Legco into a rubber stamp of the L A B and that of the government. The Legco doesn't have independence. Legislators don't have the independence to vote for what they believe in. They have to follow the decision of the L A B. We have to submit to the administration whatever their decision is. There is no reason for that. It doesn't really matter how difficult it is. We propose the amendments knowing full well that they will not be passed. We hope that some members will change their mind. But I do believe that is my own wishful thinking. Ms. Helena Wong is right to point out that if we don't do it now and wait till we come back later, then it's a genuine waste of Legco's time. We have a lot of other important topics to cover. But instead, we have to keep talking about the same thing. Jonathan Ho proposes an annual review. What does that amount to? If you don't review the mechanism in the form of the L A B, then what you ask for will not be endorsed. Everything will exist in name only without a change of the system. Workers will not be given what they are entitled to. This is about family-friendly, being family-friendly. How to enable people to have the time to take care of their babies? That is very important. A lot of members have already said problems like postnatal depression will have a severe impact on the family. Why don't we take a macro view? Why do you have such tunnel vision focusing on shortage of manpower and increasing operating cost? The secretary himself is a scholar on societal issues. Why would he just look at this matter from the perspective of the business sector and employers? I very much wanted to amend the percentage of wages as well. It is now eighty percent, but we would like it to be on full pay. But I do believe that it will complicate the matter if this is to be dealt with today. However, I would like to say that under employment policies regarding compensation or pay for sick leave, it's forfeits. It has been eighty percent for a very long time when it was changed from to third. I do think that we lag behind. You say that you now deal with paternity leave, next will be maternity leave, but there is still the pay problem, forfeits, and you say that it will cost more. You do need to give them more support because with a newborn, household expenditure will increase. Well, they have to choose whether to be on leave or not because if they are on leave, they will earn less and they will have to spend more. This will change their decision when they decide whether to stay with the baby. I know that civil servants have a different treatment. It gives the impression that it is not fair because civil servants can enjoy the paternity leave adjustment more quickly. And in the policy address, longer maternity leave is given to civil servants. Why is there such a big gap? I hope that you will take into account the feelings of non-civil servants. It's just like they've been discriminated against. So this is not just about employment right. We have to think about our future generation. You need to look at it from the point of view of societal development. And this council is not the rubber stamp of the government. We have our free will. We can vote for what we want. Please support us. Doctor Fernando Zheng. There are two stuns in this debate. First, paternity leave is cost to employers. There is a loss of workforce, and they have to pay for additional expenditure in the form of wages. So it is a loss. Of course, in economic terms, well, the less they pay, the better. Tommy Jones said that he was framed when, when he was, when is alleged that he said not even one day. He said he did not say that. He has a very special capacity. Capacity. He is also a member of the executive council. If the government said a three days going to be changed to five days, he has no choice. But to accept it and he said that we, he had to accept it and he didn't agree, he said. If it was three days to begin with. I think it is in line with what he, what he has been alleged to say. That is, not even one day. Being nice to employees. Is under the umbrella of family-friendly policy advocated by the government. It is not cost. This is uh beneficial to the company, to society, and to the entire economy.
Well, both the administration and the pro-establishment camp. Do not favor uh such an argument. Now, for many countries, not to mention the advanced countries, and even developing countries. Have better arrangements for maternity leave and paternity leave when compared with the case in Hong Kong. They are several times better than our arrangements. They are talking about. Weeks of paternity leave, maternity leave is a matter of months. And they have a family responsibility or parenting leave and they can be flexible. In other words, if the father has got more um days uh of leave. Uh that can be transferred to the mother or the other way around so that they can be more enforced in parenting. Well, I think uh we live in the twenty-first century. I think it is an idea that we all subscribe to. And it is a matter of universal values, that is, both the mother and the father should shoulder the family responsibilities. The government has said that it subscribes to such ideas, but it doesn't uh practice what it preaches. The government has been saying that we need to strike a balance. If it is beneficial to society, it will be beneficial to everybody. Now, if we make our employees happy, if they have got a good family life. Then their children have a better development and there is a better bond within the. Uh family between family members. They're happier and then the workforce is happier. And then employers will be having a more dedicated uh workforce. Employees won't. As a result of um having not enough days off. Not being able to achieve what are demanded of them and then they have to put in a resignation letter. I don't think um they will want to have a break in their career path. Just because they want to go home to take care of their children. Now today. In Hong Kong, as well as the rest of the world, if you look at the topmost echelon of the business world. Most of them are male members. This is because when a woman goes into the workforce. One day she may have to raise a family and she has to stay away from her career for a period of time. And then um business trips would not sit well with your family responsibilities. So as a result, whenever you talk about cost-effectiveness, you'll find that having a male employee would save you more trouble. Then the employer will find it easier. Uh to have a male employee and therefore he would favor having male employees and then. By the time you get promoted and as you become more and more important to your company. Then you will uh compare more favorably uh than your female colleagues. Because your boss will think that it will save him a lot more trouble. Now, we have to rectify such a um. Mindset. In my speech during the resumption of the second reading debate, I think. We we shouldn't just say that you may take your paternity leave. We should impose it as a duty on the. Uh male employees. If you don't make it mandatory, it is not going to help. Uh I think this has been borne out in overseas countries. Many male employees. They're not take their paternity leave. They're not willing to take it or they cannot take it because. The paternity leave may not be sort of uh um granted on a full pay. Basis or when you take your paternity leave, you will give your boss the impression that you are not entirely dedicated to the job. So even though there is the uh P L entitlement, sometimes it may not be uh utilized. Uh fully. I have glanced through certain articles. In the case of Google. That enterprise has increased their paternity leave from three months to five months. And instead of partial pay, they give uh employees full pay. And then in the case of such um. Um sort of um arrangements, uh the uh female turnover rate has been dropped by half. So. Do you regard your employees as human beings or just a screw in your machine? Uh if you don't have a screw, then you think that the machine will be brought to halt. But then if you regard your worker as a human being, then you will treasure his experience, you would treasure his wisdom. You think that he's going to help your business. And his networking, his knowledge base, et cetera, will become an asset of your uh business. Now, if the employee um is away on maternity leave after getting. After sort of working for you for time, you may think that it is a loss. Or in the case of a uh father-to-be. You may think that it is a loss to you, but in fact, I think it's better for you to give them ample time to be on. Uh maternity leave or paternity leave and then um they will uh maintain your productivity. Because for such dedicated staff members, they will still contribute to your business, um even though they are on leave. I think you need to be more civilized when you come to our family responsibilities. Well, with the arrival of a new baby, you need some breathing space, you need time to share um the duty. Of taking care of the new baby uh with your spouse. I don't know why Hong Kong is so outdated. In her practices. Has the Secretary for Labor and Welfare considered the idea of efficiency? In fact, it carries different interpretations. If you resort to Adam Smith's model. Then you will share the views of the business world today. That is, by giving your employee one more day off. You are going to suffer from a loss. In fact, the question is, um they were regarded as a um. Tencent coin, whether it should remain in my pockets or whether it should go to the pocket of the employee. But then if you adopt the model of kinds, then it's a matter of whether by paying uh for such a price. The whole society will stand to gain. I have explained to the logic. If you have more happy employees, if you have more healthy employees. Everybody will gain. So you need to adopt a broader vision. I don't know why, under the leadership of the Hong Kong S A R G, and I don't know why the secretary. Has transformed himself from a social work professor into a principal official. Dr. Fernando Jiang, we are now in the committee stage. I think you should focus on your C S A rather than. Uh making points reserved for a second reading debate. Yes or no, Mister Chairman? Would like to make an amendment, changing five days into seven days. The secretary has made it clear. If any of the members, uh C S As is to be passed, then the bill will be withdrawn. In other words, the government's stance is that they are not going to allow any additional days. Five days would be five days and no more. Why would the government be so narrow-minded? Now, all for the world, for advanced countries, they fare better than us. In Singapore, two weeks, in Taiwan, you can have it up to six months paid leave. For the purpose of parenting. I can see no reason why we still have to argue about the number of days. We just want to get two more days. Now, we are told that uh the increase in the wage cost would only be. Um less than uh zero point one, zero point zero one percent. Now you try to hide behind the consensus of the L A B, saying that it is a hard-earned consensus. Once the government has adopted the consensus of the L A B, that would be the only option uh acceptable. It is a joke. This is the Legco. We are the lawmakers. Who are the lawmakers? The Legco or the L A B? I think the answer is clear. The L A B is an advisory body and the chairman is the commissioner of labor. And the L A B members have been appointed by the government. Of course, you would say that there are five business representatives and five. Members elected by trade unions. You have also appointed another two members, but who can? Um. Decide on the composition of the L A B. Of course, it's the administration. The L A B is an advisory body that you have set up. Now you say that this advisory body has come to a consensus. And the Legco must follow the consensus, otherwise the administration will withdraw the bill. So you are having it all. Now you are threatening us. You have made it clear. You are saying that uh our lawmaking powers will be denied. Because the administration is controlling the legislative process. The government will dictate what is acceptable. If it is not acceptable to the uh Legco, then the government is taking it back. So it is a most backward and barbaric situation. You don't respect the constitutional setup. You don't respect the constitutional powers and duties of the Legco. We are here to check and monitor the government. We are here to make laws. We are here to represent the people. And we are here to reflect the views of the people. And this is the will of the people and it is supposed to be brought out. In the process of lawmaking, including the stage when a C S A is proposed. Yet the government dares to say that it will withdraw the bill if our C S As are to be passed. So it is a blatant undisguised um. Way to take away our lawmaking powers. I think you know very well that given the current setup. There's no way that we can introduce our own bill and only the government has the. Power to introduce a bill. Now government is saying that, yes, I'll give you something, take it or leave it. What sort of a attitude have we seen? It is a matter of strong power imposed on us. And for these words to come from somebody who used to be a social work professor. Of course, in this way, you're trying to um let the pro-establishment camp. Have a easy excuse uh to say no to us. Because they can easily say that they have to take what has been presented, otherwise they will lose everything. But in fact, they are part of the um the pro-establishment camp. Mister Gary Feng. Mister Chairman, I speak in my um fight to ask members to support me. I would like to uh change the bill. Instead of um five days, we should have seven days for the P L. And then for cross-three bracket one, when we amend um section fifteen E bracket two bracket B. Of the ordinance, five days should be struck out and it should be replaced by seven days. Uh what I want to do is that um we should as soon as possible. Make it in line with the international standards. That is, the uh P L should be increased from three days to seven days. Well, for the labor interests in Hong Kong, we are lacking behind uh the advanced economies. Therefore, for us to maintain our status as an international city, we should have moved more quickly. We should safeguard the rights of the uh labor and in fact, the workers deserve better quality of life.
Only by doing so would we be able to boost staff morale. Only by doing so, we'll be able to cultivate a sense of belonging. Among employees to their companies so as to generate more economic benefits to Hong Kong. Improving the statutory paternity leave arrangement. At this moment seeks only to slightly bring us on a par with international standards. Our parties of the view that all along the government has been favoring the business community by maintaining the statutory P L duration to five days. Which is totally out of touch with reality and ignoring the request of the labor sector. In twenty sixteen, a survey was conducted and it has been quoted again and again by members in this debate. And also according to this survey, fifty percent of employees polled in Hong Kong. Agreed that the statutory P L duration should be extended to seven days. Over twenty-five percent of respondents even requested that the P L duration uh be increased to ten days or more. Two-thirds of the respondents. Have taken three days of P L and according to them, they had to take their own leave days from one to fifteen days. In order to extend their paternity leave. This reflects a genuine need for employees in Hong Kong to enjoy a longer P L duration. This is only in line with the social science standards. When Mr. Ho Kai Ming spoke during the resumption of second. Reading of the bill, he talked about the mainstream opinion. And that opinion actually came from the survey conducted by the union, whereas the opinion that I am quoting. Is actually coming from the official survey. So there is all the more reason for us to extend the P L duration. And I think there should be full pay for P L entitlement instead of four-fifths of the um employees' average daily wages. It is quite unfortunate that we're not able to move this amendment on this occasion. We also discussed further extending the um P L duration to seven days during the B C's deliberations. The Secretary for Labor and Welfare, however, made it very clear that there is no room for the negotiation because. He kept putting up the same um excuse that the L A B has reached a hard-earned consensus. And there is no reason to depart from that. But this is not a sound argument because the L A B's concession uh consensus. Does not override the legislature because we have the public mandate, we are elected. Members, we have the responsibility of making people's voice heard. The government should heed the views of the legislature instead of the L A B. The government ha- must not ignore the views of employees in Hong Kong. With whom believe that that the P L duration should be extended to ten days. So Dr. Lo Chi Kwan, Secretary, you should not team up with the pro-establishment camp. And you should not team up with the labor unions which tend to um. Play up the same issue time and again so as to earn political points. The other criticism is that the government has been favoring the business sector. Now Mister Tommy Jiang, in an interview. Uh was said to have said something which he didn't say. And he said that it's really, uh he he has been wronged for saying that he. Believes there shouldn't even be one day of paternity leave. Believes there shouldn't even be one day of paternity leave, but it has to do with his image. Um, which is deep rooted in the community, he has the image of a really uh mean employer exploiting labor rights. We should ask why our labor rights and employment benefits are lagging far behind other countries. We should do some soul searching, well this morning Mister Jeremy Tam, when he spoke, made the same remark and I subscribe to his view. As we strive for seven days of paternity leave. We also allow our employment contracts with our subordinates to be amended so that they enjoy seven days of P L. In the last term, I remember when the amendment bill was tabled to. Establish statutory paternity leave arrangement. We did the same, we allowed our employees to enjoy P L first, so that's some stock taking for you. I want to say that in terms of um the implementation of statutory P L arrangements. As long as we have empathy, we don't need to have personal experience of being an employer, being a new father. Uh etc, we could uh speak out. Because if we take a look at what's happening around the world and how Hong Kong is lagging far behind them in terms of. Employment benefits. We would know for sure what to do about this amendment to extend the P L duration from five to seven days. We have empathy in terms of this statutory P L proposal. Mister Tommy Chung is a representative of the business sector that reflects. The exploitative and abusive way of doing business. As we all know, Hong Kong people work very long hours. Employees are exploited. They spend most of the day uh days in the office. And a company would not be able to retain any talent if it cannot even afford two extra days of P L. It is exhausting for employees and it will reduce efficiency of a company. So if we're able to improve statutory P L benefits for male employees. Then in the same vein, we'll be. Benefiting companies and. Our society as a whole. Because employees will have a better, greater sense of belonging, but Doctor Elizabeth Quad from the pro-establishment camp. Said that we now have a very low unemployment rate and we have a very tight manpower situation, it's not about money. And then there was a suggestion of a major importation of labor, however. These calls for in labor importation are exactly the reason why local employees. Have to work very hard to keep their jobs, they dare not take their, take any leave, they earn the peanuts. So under such circumstances, um how would they have this privilege of taking time off to look after. Their partners and newborns, I'd like to tell Mister Tommy Jung that we can have a shift of mindset. It's not difficult, we can genuinely implement family-friendly impo- employment practices. To better cater for the needs of employees. And also to help our new fathers, um I'm not talking about newborn fathers as Doctor Priscilla just now put it, I'm talking about. Young new fathers, because well, we many of us only have one child. So that's a one-off experience, can't we give them a few more days of leave, let's take a look at the. Twenty eighteen competitiveness report issued by the World Economic Forum. In terms of labor rights, Hong Kong scored zero, ranking bottom of the list. Well, most of these uh labor rights relate to um uh going on strike, collective bargaining, etc. Still, it reflects uh how bad our situation is when it comes to labor rights. Well, uh Mister Gary Fan, Mister Gary Fan, I want to remind you that we are. At the committee stage of the whole council, we should focus on the amendment. Uh you should not repeat the points made by many other members during the resumption of the second meeting of the bill. Right, I should focus on the increase of P L days from three to seven instead of three to five, let's take a look at the I O O survey in twenty thirteen. Seven nine jurisdictions, Mister Gary Fan, we are now discussing your amendment. So please focus on your amendment, I'm exactly on this, I'm talking about this, these seventy odd countries. Which have P L arrangements. Uh double that um ten years ago and in Belgium, ten days for paid P L, France eleven days. According to the O E C D statistics for Scandinavian countries, Norway, Sweden, Finland. They have nine to fourteen weeks of um P L respectively. In Singapore, we have first fourteen days, Philippines seven days, in Kenya in Africa. Even in Kenya, they have two weeks of P L, so much more than. Uh what we have in Hong Kong and at this minute we are this debating whether we should have five or seven days, aren't we lagging behind? Mister President. For countries with long P L duration. It's a situation um like what Mister Tommy Jung said, that the productivity of a country will be affected. The answer is the contrary, in fact, they're more productive and employees enjoy work-life balance. Employees lead lead a happier and more dignified life, so safeguarding labor rights and improving employment benefits can facilitate economic. Development so that employees can be more energetic, more creative. Instead of undermining the company's interest. So it is not just about how many days of leave we have, this amendment bill reflects the situation. Of employment rights and labor rights in Hong Kong, the stance of the government and the business sector. And how they treat our employees. It is an important reference, we'd like to improve the quality of living of Hong Kong people and we would like to allow our employees. To have a little bit more time to look after the family and for new fathers to um. Properly fulfill their duties as new father uh to take up, to take care of their newborns and partners. Many mothers, many new mothers uh suffer from postpartum depression. And it would really be helpful if fathers can spend more time to look after the partners. Finally, Doctor Lo Chi Kwan, let's put yourself in other people's shoe. We can be, we can stay united. Um, when you were a legal member representing the social welfare sector in twenty oh one, you also took part in a debate. And you also asked for fourteen days of paid P L entitlement. Now you are eating your, um now you're going back against your. Words. Because of the position you're in, you have an IQ of one sixty, so this principal official doesn't need to come up with excuses. To explain how this cannot be implemented immediately. Because in fact it is possible, it is rational, it is legally justified. And it is legitimate, we can increase the P L duration to seven days, don't be a sore loser. I emphasize once again, don't team up with the pro-establishment camp. Allow employees in Hong Kong to have a bu- better quality of of life, allow them to have um better employment benefits. So that our competitiveness as a city can improve. I urge members to support my amendment to increase the P L duration from three to seven days, Mister Ted Hoey. Thank you, Mister Lau.
I speak to move this amendment, my amendment is very simple. The government's proposal is to in- increase P L duration from three to five days. But my amendment is to further increase the number of days from five to seven days. I think um uh employees in Hong Kong suffer the most during the typhoon as we could see. Many employees uh tried every means to hurry to work. And we work overtime so frequently. And this is known to everyone, and in this council, we are discussing paternity leave, we're talking about an additional two days. Of leave. And we have been debating on this issue for twelve hours in this council already, must we go on? I don't know um how the F T U members can be so bold as to. Remain in this council.
In the second reading, a lot of members have talked about family-friendly policies and uh uh family roles. The secretary did not say anything about them, that is not the Lo Chi Kwan I know. How come that they can't, how come that he can't make use of this opportunity to. Tell us how we can promote family-friendly policy. This doesn't just e- exist in name only, because that is very important to a lot of families. This is about giving more time to fathers. To shoulder their responsibility at home when a new baby is born, to help change nappies. Take the wife and the baby to um the mother and child healthcare center. By giving. More paternity leave. By making it seven days, they can show. Hong Kong that they support family-friendly policy. That they encourage families to have more babies, to encourage fathers to help take care of their children. To promote employment among women. Let's now turn to this chamber, the elites of the business sector. Bosses, businessmen, they complain about. Paternity leave entitlements being increased to seven days, saying that the world, um the sky is going to cave in. They are going to lose everything, what we ask for is that you. Do a bit more to your employees because if you are kind to your employees. They would be more devoted and more loyal to you. Well, if my child has just been born, I would not be able to focus at work. I would be um glued to the phone, checking WhatsApps to see if my, if the mother. Would need me to buy more nappies, more formula milk or help in any way. I don't think this is conducive to productivity, I would like to hear from Tommy Jung in this regard. You are proprietors, you are elites in the business sector, shouldn't you forge a better culture? You don't just treat your workers as a cog in the wheel. You don't, you don't treat them as slaves, they are your assets, they are your partners. You rely on them to be successful. The secretary said that it is a consensus hard-earned and that you don't have any choices. I would like to criticize him again for being so um. Unscrupulous. The Labor Advisory Board is not a statutory body, it doesn't have any. Power to scrutinize everything, anything, they just. It is just a platform to enable the labor sector and employers to sit down together and discuss matters. And we all know how representative uh the um it is, you can ask any employees. In the street what the L A B is, when they convene meetings. And whether they, there is any credibility, but by the sound of it, according to the secretary, that the L A B. Is. More important than the legal. And that legal should submit to the L A B, we are returned. By elections, even if you are a member of the uh functional constituency, there is still a small circle election. And we have statutory roles to play, we are here to scrutinize bills, we represent different trades. And different walks of life. So we have representativeness. Lo Chi Kwan, the secretary, said that you have no choice, you do have choices and I would like to explain to the public what. His choices are. The Democratic Party, I myself included, move amendments to increase the paternity leave entitlement to seven days. If there are pro-government members supporting our amendment, then it will be endorsed. It will take time to implement it, it will take time to gazette it, go ahead. If seven days is endorsed, then go back to tell the L A B that this is the consensus of the legal. Respect the view of the legal, why can't you do it? Withdrawing the bill is what you decide, what you have decided to do, don't tell people that you have no choice. You have to explain to the public that legal is more representative than the L A B. And we have more credibility, of course. I will, will, I'll have to explain to the public about why the situation is so skewed. It's because, well, um you, we know who returned the majority. Of the members here from business sector and let's look at the election committee of the chief executive. They are from uh trade associations, employers' associations. Uh whether it is um the business se- subsector one, two, industrial sector one, two, retail sector one, two. Voters themselves are or proprietors. Well. They account for about three hundred voters in a few of those subsectors. The chief executives is returned by the business sector and the chief executive appoints the secretary. What else do you expect, they will always put the interests of. The business sectors first, say for example, the offsetting mechanism of M P F. First, if said that there was the twelve-year two-tier subsidy, now it's increased to uh twenty-five years. A quarter of a century, Mister Hoey, please come back to this bill, yes. This is about close to thirty billion dollars going to the business sector. You're afraid of the business sector, you side with them, I'm afraid that. You uh will only get yourself more entangled, you will not, will not be able to free yourself from their grip. And the cost in the end will be paid by employees. I myself and other pan-democrats will vote. On our amendments to increase it to seven days. These are business sector elites, I don't have much expectations. I appeal to political parties rep- that represent workers, the F T U, Jonathan Hall, listen to this. Show us some courage, show us that you have free will. Don't become us a rubber stamp. Speak for grassroots, speak for workers. I say that you will either leave this chamber or you will just sit here and not vote, don't prove me right. Otherwise, you will always be uh. Don't prove me right. Otherwise, you will always be uh labeled. With traitor to workers. What infuriates me more is that I do expect that the business sector. Uh not to support employ- employment benefit, but what about the fathers here? Vincent Chang. We, there are some young fathers here. They have experienced. How much their wives need them when a child was born, they had to go to. Uh doctors follow-ups, there was pressure. Um, there was emotional changes experienced by the wife. Shouldn't you speak for fathers of newborn? I am one of them. You speak for the government. You speak for the business sector. You speak for employers. You don't have your own free will. That is very disappointing. I would like to appeal to you all. If it's something that can help fathers of newborn babies, if it helps. For something to be more family friendly. There's only two days difference to increase it from five to seven. Take a step more. Hong Kong is a civilized society. Yet, we are still bogged down by two days from five to seven. It brings shame. I feel shameful about our government. The secretary said that he would withdraw the bill. And that is not a threat. Don't lie. You don't respect the Legco and you force the hands of Legco to support you, otherwise we will lose everything. A member said that the administration's uh colluding with the business sector by staging a show. This is a. Just sharing of political benefits at the expense of the interest of the public. I am not a radical left. I don't think that labor comes first, uh labor is always right. I just want. Care to be given to family so that we will be more civilized. This is not just about grassroots. There are middle-class families. Where some of them can afford to employ helpers. But there are a lot of people who would like to have their husbands to be by their side. To take care of uh their newborn babies. There are women uh who had to have a C-section. They feel poorly after the operation. They would like to have the husband to be by their side. Not just parents and um and and in-laws, but their own husband. I appeal to you. To support my amendment and those from the Democrats. To change paternity leave from five days to seven days. I so submit, Mister Kenneth Long. There are two groups under this uh set of amendments. First. Move, the first is moved by Miss Helena Wong to change. The paternity leave entitlement. In phases. During the first year, it will remain at five days. After the expiry of the first year, it will be increased to seven years. Amendments of the others. Directly increase the paternity leave to uh seven days. They are Mister Leng Yiu Chong, Mister Gary Fan. And Mister Ted Hui and Doctor Fernando Jung. There is also a technical amendment to change the long title. All in law, whether it is um that of Doctor Helena Wong or the other four. I would support them. If you have been listening or following uh topics. Related to employees, you will realize that when it comes to uh. The economics, I am a rightist. But I don't think when it comes to labor issues, one should differentiate oneself uh into left or right. When we discuss about employment rights or employment benefits. Proprietors, whether they are micro enterprises or that of S M Es. Will always talk about affordability, whether it is paternity leave, maternity leave. Or any kinds of um subsidy. They always uh harp on one point. That it is not affordable because it will drive up operating costs. We need to pause and think. Does the argument stand? Is it an idea that we should buy? If you are short-sighted in attempting to. Look at this issue. Say, for example, within a year. An employee is on paternity leave or maternity leave or or leave of other natures. Well, in, within this year, probably your business cost has gone up and your affordability has been weakened. But if you become more open-minded and if you take up a horizon of five years. Say, for example, if you have granted paternity leave or maternity leave to a particular employee, or if you allow. A female employee to have more days of maternity leave. Then in fact, uh the cost will go down drastically. I labored on this point yesterday. Today, I want to talk more about the overall productivity. Well, it's productivity in direct proportion to um. The number of days worked. Now, if someone works uh a hundred days, then he will turn out. Productivity of a figure of one thousand dollars. Doesn't mean that if he works fewer days. Then his productivity will fall. I don't think so. And I don't think uh there is a hard and fast rule when it comes to the cause and effect. Now, for the P L to be increased from five days to seven days, it is a mere difference of two days only. Now, of course, for micro enterprises and S M Es, you may have a dozen or so employees. Think about your employees. Not everyone is married, and even if they are all married, not every one of them will raise a family. Now, a male employee may have children, but then probably we talk about one or two times in his whole life. So you are merely giving this male employee at most two extra days or four extra days. And for an S M E with twenty employees, there may only be one or two such qualifying employees. And then the extra P L days to be granted would be at most eight or ten days only. So if we look at the negative impact on the business cost. It will be difficult to put a dollar sign. However. Research studies have told us that an extra day or two would only. Impact upon the labor cost to the tune of zero point one to zero point two percent. If the boss is to grant a few extra days to an employee in the form of P L. Perhaps you can also try to see how employees can work shorter hours. But with the same productivity or a higher level of productivity. Well, in today's world. The enterprise with the highest productivity may not ask employees to work the largest number of working days. Say, for example, in Germany, they have a high level of productivity. What about the number of working days in a week or in a month? Well, they don't necessarily be having the longest working hours. One other hand, in Hong Kong. We have the benefits of different studies and usually we are told that. Uh in Hong Kong, we have long working hours, but then our productivity is on the low side. What is the reason? If employers start to think about the matter. Then you can certainly find ways to do the following. Even though we work fewer days, shorter hours. We can still raise our productivity. I think in the twenty-first century, we have advancement of. Technology and we can make use of our big data, we can make use of A I, we can. Make use of such a technology to benefit the S M Es. When we look around our neighbors, let me not go to European or American. Uh countries of or the U S A. In the case of Japan. New parents may apply for a year-long parenting leave. And they will be given uh part of their pay. Now, even when they give them a year's parenting leave uh entitlement, they may not be um. Staying away for an entire year. In the year twenty seventeen, the Labor Ministry. Found that only five percent of the new dads would take paternity leave. And among the five percent could did so on average. The number of days that they've applied for were on average, but between five and ten days. In other words, even if we have this legislative amendment to increase the P L from five days to seven days. Not everybody will be taking the full seven days. Moreover, for the seven days involved, they don't have to be taken in one go. Now, for a new dad, uh if he thinks that it is necessary to take a day off to discharge certain family duties. Uh then he will do so. In other words, probably the new dad won't be taking. Uh all the seven days in one go. All he has to do is to do so within the first three to six months of the birth of the child. Now, in the case of mainland China, the central. Government doesn't impose any uh P L duties on the employers. But then provincial governments do provide for the following. That is, they have different arrangements concerning paternity leave. Among the different provinces, seven days would be the minimum. The longest would be thirty days. Of course, um we're talking about remote places. In particular, those with more ethnic minorities. Probably, this is the national policy to encourage. Ethnic minorities to have more children. In Gansu and Yunnan. And Si- uh uh Xinjiang, they have got a deep, deep bed, uh they have got more uh P L days. Well, um I referred to the examples of other places. I'm not saying that we should sort of do exactly the same. They do have their own economic reasons and social reasons to do so, but still, we can see that among the. Different uh cities and countries, uh at different stages of economic development. Seven days will still be the minimum. It will still be the starting point. Now, Hong Kong is supposed to be Asia's wealth city. Why are we having five days only? It is mind-boggling. Now, of course, colleagues would say. We already have shortage of manpower and our employment rate is almost hundred percent. If we start to provide so. Much in terms of employment and benefits, employers would find it difficult to um get. Replacement workers when somebody is on P L. But if you try to think. On the other hand, that uh if our employee benefits are so poor. Then it is not possible to attract enough labor to come to Hong Kong. To fill the manpower gap. If we didn't have good employee benefits. It is difficult to attract foreign talents. It is difficult to get experienced. Labor to make up the shortfall. So it will become a cycle, a vicious cycle. If we don't start to think about an answer, we'll never get it resolved. Now, of course, many people would talk about uh the Global Competitiveness Report issued two weeks ago. Uh by the World Economic Forum. We ranked seventh among the hundred and forty countries. It is not bad. Uh because we have fallen in terms of our ranking, but still. Many labor groups have uh told the secretary that we scored zero. Uh in terms of labor rights. When compared with Saudi Arabia and Kuwait. Uh we have the same scores. The secretary did rebut the uh argument. Saying that to a large extent, uh the ranking uh of Hong Kong in terms of uh labor rights. Um they would uh look at the ninety-seven indices of the I L O, which cover um collective bargaining. The right to strike, et cetera, and um. We, we want the international community to have a good perception of Hong Kong. Now, if we show others this paper, that is, we score zero in terms of labor rights. Uh I think the headline would be very scary, scaring, and nobody would continue to read the details. Now, we have the maternity leave, we have got the proposal. To abolish the offsetting mechanism for M P F. Um, it doesn't do you any harm to do more for our workers. If you want to regain our dignity in the world community, if we want to rise in our rankings in the. Uh World Economic Forum's report, two extra days for P L would not. Impact heavily on the um businesses. I don't think the cost will suffer from too much pressure. So, so I speak and I support the C S A's move by Helena Wong and for other members. Thank you. Mister Outlock him, Mister Chairman, as Mister Kenneth Long has said. There are a number of groups uh in relation to the C S As. For Doctor Helena Wong's C S A, it is progressive in nature. And then other D P members have also said. As to why they want to change it from five days to seven days. For the C S As, I would like to speak my mind. And just now, a number of members have spoken. Uh their, their stance and let me uh provide a quick response. I don't think I need to spend all the fifteen minutes that I'm entitled to. I'll be quick. First of all, regarding Doctor Helena Wong's C S A, let me comment on her C S A. Well. F T U members. Uh have been having a lot of uh grievance. They have said that they feel aggrieved. But if we. Say that we need to respect the consensus of the L A B. While at the same time, if you want to fight for labor rights, then. I think you need to take up the C S As moved by the members. Now, sometimes we may not be able to achieve what we want to do in one go. Now, we have Mister Lo Chong Hong. Just coming back into the chamber. I did share some views with him and I found his point quite interesting. He talked about Marxism. I think in some way it is related to Helena Wong's C S A. Well, maybe not many members uh understand his point. Now, for the labor class, the working class, they may not know that they are within the working class. They may not be aware that they have been exploited. Now, what we want to advocate is that. Now, what we want to advocate is that the working class uh should become class for itself instead of class in itself. In other words, you need to become aware of your position. And then you should know about the hostility between the capitalist class and the working class. Uh well, if you say that uh you work through the L A B, that's the way how communication is carried out. The L A B has a consensus, and the working class should adopt and accept it. Can you really convince me that this is what we have in relation to class for itself? Uh now, for Helena Wong's C S A, now, her proposal is progressive or gradual. Yes, of course, we know that uh the P L uh proposal is not going to answer all our wish.
And now, we understand with additional leave days, we can implement friendly, uh family-friendly policies. We can really help look after the wives as a form of employee benefits or rights. So if we take this perspective, shouldn't we support Doctor Helena Wong's amendment? Will be a chairman or members here. I hope that uh we would not uh spend spend too much time on the leftist doctrines and Marxist theories. In fact, I've been studying economics for the purpose of debating with the secretary. And in fact, I've done some reading on labor economics. I've been reading journals whilst listening to this debate, because I want to supplement some points. Mister Peter Shil and Mister Tommy Jiang, they they've made some arguments. And I wonder if I can apply these viewpoints that I learned from the Labor Economic Journals. Now, when it comes to the economic perspective of paternity leave, I would very much hope to answer your questions. Is it like what the business sector suggests, that if we increase the P L duration from five to seven days, it will pose such a huge burden on enterprises? And that it will be so difficult in terms of manpower? Let's put economics aside. Let's just ask whether it is possible that a company would collapse simply because two more days of leave um offered to the employee is clearly a fallacy. It's not logical. Would the company in such a mess if we have two more days of leave? But in some cases, some employees may take no pay leave for some family business or some other emergencies. I don't think the enterprises would collapse. Another point is that I'd like to talk about economics and economic theory. First, one major consensus over paternity leave arrangement. It's not really that something, uh it's not really something the labor sector representatives should rely on. Because it's actually a double-edged sword. Let's say if the expectant mother enjoys more days of leave and also uh the father taking more days of paternity leave, the jobs will be affected. For example, if you leave the um workforce for a number of years, well, let's say in the financial industry, that is exactly the case. If you don't follow the market closely on a daily basis, you won't be able to catch up. And this affects the life planning of these employees. So uh the only reason that we should have more days of paternity or maternity leave is to create a family-friendly employment environment. That is, for the needs of expectant mothers to be taken care of. And let me also refer to some more serious situations. For example, the possible postpartum depression among expectant mothers and also uh miscarriage, et cetera. If we have more days of paternity leave, we might be able to alleviate some of these serious situations. So, uh let me try to address the business sector representatives' concerns. They made a point, for example, if we increase P L from five to seven days, and I stand to be corrected. Well, he they were saying to Doctor Law that even if we increase the days to seven days, they will continue to criticize. And in fact, I'm referring to an article about labor market effects of parental leave in Europe. And it's in this um academic journal and it
uh maternity and parental leave in Europe. Leave legislation in the future is unlikely to see any decline, but will go through further optimization.
Well, so the crux of the matter is, I understand the business sector is quite concerned. That is, if we further increase P L to seven days, whether there'll be more problems. But I am sorry to say that when it comes to striving for a longer P L duration, we are sharing the government's view that we should draw reference from international experience. According to their study, if we achieve the optimum, there won't be a need to strive for an even longer duration of leave. That's a fallacy. Very often, when we achieve optimum in terms of the M L or P L dur- duration, we should be able to meet the needs of fam- um of families in general. So on this point, I don't agree that we should stop striving for seven days of P L, for example. Because this is not the reason, uh to quote, that is to suggest that we'll be striving for more days. We have Journal of Family Issues, another academic journal, assessing the optimal length of parental leave for child and parental well-being. Now, in this article, one point is raised. Several days of paternity leave and even for M L. That is to say, for those striving for M L. That is to say, whether maternity leave will have uh such an adverse impact on the labor market. I can't quote the whole article, but the whole point is about not having a significant adverse impact. So far, I haven't seen any economic model which suggests that the labor force will be more productive and efficient if we have five days or seven days of P L. But at least, we should understand that in theory, P L is something of a double-edged sword. If a male employee applies for paternity leave, he will try his best to remain in his job. The purpose of taking P L is not to have their career prospects affected by the newborn. That is why they would make arrangements between work and family, so that their job prospects will not be affected by this newborn. Such that um they will not be sacked or they will not be demoted or barred from promotion. While in the article, it is also suggested that the situation is even more obvious in the United States. So I think we can also give these uh points some thought. And men in many other countries around the world, many countries enjoy longer P L duration. For Lotte in Korea, first-time fathers enjoy one month of P L. And for C L P in Hong Kong, male employees enjoy ten days of P L. That may not be the case for S M Es in Hong Kong. But again, I'm quoting this viewpoint to try to allay the concerns of S M Es over the two additional days of P L proposed. Finally, I'd like to say the uh say these words to to the secretary. The L A B's position is shared by the government. This is your position, and that is that's why we should support um the government's C S A. But are you really following the L A B's rationale or the academic theory? I think we should give it some thought. Thank you, Mister Lo. About these amendments and the joint debate, whether we should have five or seven days of P L, I think that's the crux of the debate, and this is on the table now. We are spending so much time on this debate because these issues are at stake. It has to do with how we make a breakthrough in terms of the labor movements in Hong Kong. While the secretary has made the threat and he refuses to acknowledge that this is a threat. He is saying that if these C S As are passed, the government will withdraw the bill, so that there will be a lose-lose for all. So why is it that under such circumstances, the Democrats are still going ahead with their C S As? Is it simply because they believe that the C S As will not be passed anyway, and it is a risk-free approach? And something like a lose-lose situation, in which we don't even have five days of P L, will never happen? Is that the rationale? And if that is the case, we're talking about labor movements, and that is how employees in Hong Kong can stand united to strive for better employment benefits. And I'd like to refer to Alice Mack's speech. She mentioned that every time the Democrats would attack F T U members on these occasions, but on the contrary, the Democrats are not genuinely concerned about labor rights. The Democrats are only politicizing these issues. So the subtext of her speech is that as long as you do not accept the government's proposal, that is, to pocket it first, you are not putting labor rights first. And I think we should consider Alice Mack's viewpoint at this committee stage. Because she is suggesting whether we should gamble so that if we have more members in support of a certain member's amendment amendment, the government um will need to do something about it, whether to withdraw the bill, because the ball is now in the government's court. On labor issues, I think there are two contradictions regarding F T U's position. First, they believe labor rights in Hong Kong are really backward, and they need to continue to strive for better rights. The F T U, of course, must believe that uh the majority of employees are contributing to our society, and we are the masters of our society. And the voice of employees is very crucial in our, in terms of social development. Of course, we have far more employees than employers. And I don't think the F T U will object to this uh statement. On the other hand, however, the they are, they have been accepting the government's proposal, even from the British colonial era, in terms of the government's approach in dealing with labor rights and labor disputes. And these kind of mechanisms, including the L A B and the legalese, whether we are talking about the composition and the way it handles matters, is in fact consolidating a system or regime which F T U believes is unreasonable and needs improvement. Now, to say, take the L A B as an example. On the surface, well, six members are employers' representatives and six are employees' representatives, half-half. But in fact, in a society, uh workers outnumber the bosses. And say if the F T U and other labor organizations accept the L A B as the first platform to improve labor rights, you are actually belittling yourself, because as a first step, well, you should have millions of workers and then you um you try to forge a consensus with the employers. Oh, I I don't believe a vote is uh often taken at the L A B. As long as the employers are objected, then it will be a non-starter. So then, conclusion naturally is that we will be moving at a very slow pace. As pointed out by Mister Tommy Jiang just now, they would like to have all the say, the employers. And they said the, well, the if the employers can afford it, then they can give more leave. They can take as long as uh one month or one year's leave. So the uh decision should rest with the employers, uh depending on their affordability. Don't try to legislate on them. Can you, can we think the other way around? And that is, uh of um, well, if a statutory P L is put in place, then the workers can apply uh for whatever period they would like to uh take. Now, even if you give them ten days, uh the men will not, may not take all of them, because men are more career-minded. So the issue that we are facing is now we are at the committee stage. The government has made threats, which they don't admit to. Um uh we still will move some C S As, and we appeal to F T U members who think that seven days are better than five days. Please, um cast a yes vote. And the rationale is very simple, because uh we must put pressure on the government to come clean with the public. And as to why, uh even if we pass seven days, they're going to withdraw the five-day proposal. If we don't do that, we won't let the pub, we won't be able to let the public know how the system works now. Structurally, um the system has um meant that any move to improve labor rights will proceed at a snail's pace. And if we uh uh tolerate such kind of system, Uh uh tolerate such kind of system, then we will have um. Ongoing or uh social movement. Or perpetual social movement. You know that you won't be able to achieve in what you strive for, but well, let's do it slowly then. You should have given us seven days, but then you start with three days and five days and six days and then seven days. And then you will wait for twenty years before you get seven days. So what price are we paying then? And things which should have been discussed have not been discussed and a lot of problems which should be resolved. Uh remain unresolved and that is a point made by Doctor Helena Wong. This is a very simple and straightforward issue that we're debating on and because of the structure which. Slow down things and you are forcing us to move slowly. So people who are on the right side call themselves Democrats, that's exactly what it's all about. The Di- Democrats have to go into the crux of the matter. And that we should be able to explain why the structure has made. Uh things is slow and we should let the public know about this and we should break out of this uh system. Including the electrical and the L A B. Now, we have a seven point four million population in Hong Kong with several millions of workers in Hong Kong. If we give a little bit more right to the workers and their uh representatives. I believe that we would not be proceeding at a snail's pace. The employers should also come to understand that. Money talks. Or you have order say as long as you've got the money, the mass public, um we have so many workers. We would not forge a consensus with you. We should safeguard um our rights as a human being. And then you said that you want to make money. Of course, in a capitalist society. Um, I don't want you to go out of business, we will be losing our jobs. No, that's not what we want. We don't want you to um run out of business, but if you let you have the say, then we will. Continue to be in a position whereby we have to debate so fiercely on P L. Need recently, F T U members have. Um asked the government to to deal with labor rights after. A typhoon or natural disaster hits and so on. Uh you would also object to this kind of proposal and then it will say take say. Another ten or twenty years before we get anything done. And lastly, Mister Tommy Zhang. Uh you must clarify on what you such uh what you said just now because he um. Mentioned that in his interview on a radio program on T V B and that he said that Miss Zhang put. Words into his mouth. Well, this is not a debate, Mister Eddie Ju, please come back to this um. Um C S A, a debate on C S A. I I can't come back to this C S As because I would like to seek a clarification from Mister Tommy Zhang. He said he didn't say. There's anything like that. And on the twelfth of August. The when you do media reports. While the um headlines newspaper. He said that he would not withdraw his or retract his remark saying that. There should not be even one single of P L. If you haven't said that, why do you have to retract your remark? I didn't. Uh watch his um T V interview live, um that so there's no way that I can judge, but I think you must. Come out to um clarify. He said on the tenth of August that he would not retract the remarks saying that a single. Um. P L days, uh well, there shouldn't be even one single P L day. So members, please support the uh pan-democrats' C S As. But of course, you have to agree that seven days is pref- preferred over five days. And if you are agreeable. And you, i- if you are like myself, that uh we should. Face this structural problem which uh makes our labor movement proceed slowly. We must gamble with the government. We must pressure the government. We must let the public. Uh know about the exploitation within the system now. So I speak, Mister Holden Chow. Thank you, President or Chairman. This session of debate. Is about P L uh in simple terms whether it should be five or seven days. Now, for those following the debate life on T V. If they've heard what the oppo- only what the opposition said, then they will be easily misled. Because the government sets five days and the opposition camp sets seven days and they said that if you don't support five days. Then they will ask, well, just an extra two days. How come that you are not giving that away? Um. Is it a very poor attitude? So he he would like us to support the. Uh opposition camp's C S As. I think uh they are misleading many members of the public in Hong Kong. I believe that if members support the government's proposal of five days, it doesn't mean that some. We we think that seven days is is not good. If we have seven days, maybe it's uh it will be uh accepted by the public and that's something good, of course. But then, why we support the government's five-day proposal? Because I think it has to do with the mechanism. It's not just about these two days. Now, these five days proposal has been deliberated at the L A B. Uh by um the employers and employee side and it's a consensus reached. I think the key lies not in the two days. So opposition camp members, please be fair. Don't just tell people that if. I support five days, then I object to these extra two days. No, please get that clear. Why? We are supporting the government's proposal of five days and that's because. That was. A consensus reached at the L A B and we have to respect this mechanism. Which has worked well in um resolving disputes between the employers and employees. And we should try to adhere to this mechanism in dealing with this issue. So chairman. It's not a better amount about how many days, one day or two days. I think it has, it all has to do with the mechanism. So let's get that clear first. And then some fellow members also talked about. The L A B forging a consensus and that the electrical must um follow your decision. So. Does it mean that the electrical doesn't have its own stance? No, that's not the case. I must say something about this too, Chairman. In dealing with this amendment bill. Uh we are dealing with it under the premise that we respect the L A B's decision because this platform. Has been effective in dealing with issues relating to employers and employees and also. Apart from dealing with the core issue of five days or seven days today. And the electrical can continue to give views on, say, family-friendly policies. Let me cite an example. At this platform, electrical. I. Think the society as a whole are through this dispute can receive certain messages. Well, let me cite an example, family-friendly policies. So maybe working from home. In other countries, um this is very popular. In Hong Kong. However. It is not yet very common. Um because of many different reasons, but. Uh many members have spoken today and they are not just on five or seven-day paternal leave. They also touched upon the issue of working from home. And also should employers uh allow flexibility to the employees whenever something untoward's happening. So. Through this platform and through the debate at the electrical. The employees' speeches are also uh will serve the purpose of, say, changing the culture of the society. And also you would like to also change the attitude of the employers as well.
Maybe someday, the L A B would discuss some other issues. And because we have a. Done something for public education and the late the employer side may be more red. Maybe willing to accept more of the requests from the employees' side. And we can take things forward. So I would say this uh council should also act as a platform for public education to, we should inform the public. But we should not use serve this uh. Platforms functions, i.e. the L A B. It's about, the argument is about the mechanism. It's not about whether we should have one or two more days of P L. We do not agree to the C S A move by the opposition camp. Not because we think that there would be problems if we grant two more days of P L, because as some members put it, it's just two days. More important to me is the mechanism and the respect that we should pay. To this effective mechanism to or in resolving the disputes. Between the um the employer and the employee. Let me now turn to uh another issue which is equally important. I've heard from Mister Chih Hoitik that in dealing with labor related issues. We are moving at a snail's pace. Whether we are is 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 a dispute between the employer and employee or in dealing with uh. Social issues. I would like to say this. Well, whenever we deal with a reform, uh it's not always a good approach to allow the uh. To allow the development to go in a s- a pendulum swing fashion. There are political theories. Which said that, well, in the community, we have conservatives. In politics. We have conservatives. Some people would like to have a reform that carry out quickly, but conservative may not find it agreeable. Because according to the conservatives, change. May bring about a ch- uh gradual. Improvement, but there are also uncertainties. Which would be even more risky than that brought by change. You don't want to have sudden uh changes. Thereby leading to uncertainties and risks of uncertainties. Therefore, you can you can see. That in a lot of western countries, they have a very significant conservative cap camp. And they are, they they are very careful about the pace of reform. Uh they don't want to have swings to one side and then to the other very suddenly. We must let people know that that there is another perspective to the question of achieving progress. Well, today we agree with the government's proposal in the bill because we want to respect the L A B. As a mechanism to resolve uh disputes. And if we uh. Use serve their functions, then I'm concerned whether the L A B would continue to act as a dispute resolution mechanism. And then the the employee side was 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 thinking that uh. The consensus state that they have reached at the A L A B can be overturned, so they will be less willing to the. To negotiate with the employer employee side at the L A B and there will be more serious consequences to follow. Doctor Kwakwak. Chairman. I speak in support of the C S A to in in increase uh. P L from five days to seven days. But before I go to that, I would like to respond to Mister Holden Chow. Well, it's said that we need to respect the mechanism. In an open and democratic society. The mechanism should be simple and that is a social change or progress should be made in accordance with majority view. But what mechanism do we have in taking forward the. Progress and development. Half of the members here are from I of elected by functional constituencies. Where else can you find such a system? How many members here have actually the. Got no vote, zero vote. So what kind of mechanism is this? How is our government formed? We rely on a small election committee with more than over a thousand members. What what are these people? Who are they? Well, you talk about a conservative people. Well, they are businessmen. The business sector enjoys a a clear um advantage. In terms of membership in all sorts of government statutory advisory bodies. If we bring up any issue that may affect the interests of business or of or of the rich people. Or people whose political affiliation is. Pro Beijing. Then it's difficult. And and the wishes of those who want to reflect public opinion cannot be fully expressed. For example, public opinion is not uh fully expressed here apart from F C members. The government also resort to different tricks to disqualify the members or. Members' election to the run for elections. Well, they, he has talked about the mechanism for so long. Why can't I also talk about the mechanism? Well, you have digressed a lot. Well, if you continue to digress, I have to ask you to stop your speech. I was talking about why. Uh when we, why why we have to have a discussion like this? Why do we have this proposal to increase a P L from three to five days? Uh without the concern of the uh. Labor sector. First of all, the system cannot manifest the majority view. Second, uh he. They are seeing as if the idea of seven days of P L. Uh has been put out of the thin air. Well, actually, th- those members sitting next to you, the well. Were those who proposed seven days of P L and the F T U was so the. Serious in telling the electric that they would like to have seven days of P L. And then they 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 backed off when the government said it should be three days. How come you you can find for better uh labor rights if you do that? And they are also from your camp, Mister Chow. And now, uh we shouldn't have to be in a position that we need to consider members' C S A. If the government uh cares about uh workers. If the government uh cares about uh workers. Uh well, I don't want to repeat the uh figures already already quoted by other members. The additional cost is just one hundred million dollars. In terms of the total labor costs, it's zero point zero two to zero point zero four. A small enterprise would incur additionally two hundred forty dollars. With ten also employees. How come the Hong Kong would lose its competitiveness because of such a small additional cost? Another important issue is that we should look at the bigger broader picture. Uh we have small families. If the. The the husband is working and the and the wife. Gives birth to a baby. And if the husband can take care of the baby for two more days under the new arrangement. I don't think people with a conscience would say that this is not right. Why do you think that is a is 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 a crime to increase the. P L entitlement from five to seven days and we are accused of 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 of. Of undermining the mechanisms or we do not keep our promise. Well. Well, you are actually the. Upending truth. Well, look at Maynan ten days. Singapore offers fourteen days. Are aren't these our role models? Uh they are our competitors and we have been saying that we should uh. Uh learn from them. What about the Maynan? They they offer it it offers ten days. Why not? Copy what the Maynan is doing. Uh because it's not to their to in their interest. It goes against the interests of the business sector. And there are some remarks which are really the. Unreasonable. And that is to say, Mister Wong Ting Kung said some new fathers may take paternity leave. To to have some more time to to have fun. Mister Wong Ting Kwan. If you want to speak, please press a button. Please don't speak from your seat. Uh Chairman, let me continue. Or maybe he he is afraid ashamed of what he has said. These people, work workers at the front line. Are not asking for a big change, two days, just two days. Some would say that this is a matter of principle. No, we can't give you two more days. If the government. Take a step back. And then you let the employer and the employees's side. Fight it out. Maybe I don't know whether this is your intention. If the government didn't back off, if the government acted with fairness, then in twenty twelve. When the government granted. Paternity leave to civil servants, we wouldn't have to wait for three more years in twenty fifteen. To have a a P R entitlement of of three days. If the government acted fairly. Then it shouldn't have. Treated the requests like this. And I don't think we 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 are asking for anything more than other advanced places. Just is seven days. The government has been trying to promote or increase our fertility rate. In nineteen eighty-one is sixty-five point one. And in twenty ten is only thirty-five point nine. Meaning that more and more people are reluctant to have more children or to have children at all. It has to do with our long working hours, the longest in the world. Thirty-eight percent higher than the world average. Long working hours, high work pressure, high rental, high property prices. A factors affecting young couples' willingness to have babies.
The present proposal to lengthen the P L is like a kind of penis. And it seems you have repented. What you have done, so that. There will be um. A small possibility for young couples to have children and to take care of the children. So that having babies is not such a big burden. That is the entire objective of P L. So that the father who is also a main component of the family can be at home to help the wife. But no, you say this is such a big sin if we ask for more days. You resort to distorted arguments to smear proposals of the amendment. This is quite um evil. Some people say the L A B is an important unit. And we cannot flout the consensus of the L A B. Let me talk about structure. We should have a fair and open election. So we can return the government and a council which should together make policies. But no, we will not have universal suffrage anytime soon. The administration says either you settle for fake universal suffrage or you accept this distorted structure. The L A B pretends to be a conservative body. In fact, the administration hides behind it. So that. People who only have a thousand votes will be able to call the shots. And even the administration has to bow down in front of them. And that is why all these years. Let us look at a recent ranking of Hong Kong. We have dropped one rung on competitiveness and in terms of labor rights, we scored zero. I talked to some. Small enterprises in Hong Kong. They did not mind. Giving two more days of P L to their employees, given the very low birth rate in Hong Kong at present. So that there is a better environment for the newborn babies. But President, we of course understand and we don't need to wait for the time to press the button. To know that all amendments will be vetoed. There will be no surprise. But here, I'd like to ask a question. Just now. There were claims that you cared a lot for Hong Kong people, Mister Chow and your party. And also you, the F T U, who claimed to defend labor rights. I'd like to ask you, when you vote in favor of the government's amendment. How can you be accountable to the millions of workers in Hong Kong? How can you be accountable to those people who thought that indeed you would deliver what your platform. At election said that you would fight for seven days P L. We are talking about. Fair treatment, family-friendly environment, maternity leave and paternity leave. You promised your voters all that. How now are you going to be accountable to them? We should go forward in our policies. Business bosses would also like. To give their employees a sense of pride. Uh because employers care for them and so that they will also do their best for the company. If you look at these Scandinavian countries, they were the first to provide P L. And also they give very long M L. And it made possible for women to stay in the labor force. And many of them actually returned to work before the statutory leave period is over. The administration puts up an affected attitude, saying that they would like to release the labor of women. To add to the labor force. But if that is the case, why are you so stubborn? In in fact, uh your policies which torture the labor force. Mister Wong Ting Kwan, what is your point of order? Like to ask Doctor K K Kwok to clarify his accusation against me. I have a script and my speech has been audio taped and even the media quoted me. I talked about the meaning of P L. And I said the administration should step up publicity to state clearly. The original intent of P L. And that it is not for fathers to leave his family behind in order to have a good time. For his own entertainment. Doctor, uh Mister Wong Ting Kwan, you have already asked the question. Doctor K K Kwok, would you like to give any clarification? If you listened to him, it was from the script. So what is there to clarify? What matters is voting. If you really support the labor force, I appeal to you to. Support lengthening P L to seven days, members. Please do not shout from your seats, Mister Jonathan Ho.